Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, May 9th, 2017, Abington School Building Committee Meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the April 6, 2017, School Building Committee Meeting Minutes.
Salute.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Minutes are approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is a construction progress update from Mary Mahoney of KBA.
So, part of our construction update was provided during the tour today, so hopefully you all were happy with what you were seeing for progress this month. In addition to the physical project progress that you could see while on-site, we have also started many system startups in the building. In the last month, we performed startups for all of the rooftop units, the RTUs, the ERUs, the MAUs, exhaust fins have been started. The chillers were started last week, and those all occurred without any issue. The boilers were started previously and have been running for a few months. And now, security systems are being brought online, including the perimeter security, which is actually on a call signal, so that if we do have any intruders in the building, the GC will be notified immediately. So, that gives us a little bit of an assurance that the building is in safe hands for the next few months till we have a complete turnover. We also have had water balancing and air balancing performed for the HVAC systems in the building. That is a prerequisite for the certificate of occupancy, and those are all coming back fine, so we appear to be in good shape with regard to the systems in the building. You also saw a lot of the lighting and lighting controls as we were walking around the building today that are now up and functioning. With regard to life safety systems, during the past month, the fire alarm has had multiple tests to it to ensure that each component is reporting correctly to the fire alarm boxes. During the past week, there was a full fire alarm test, and that fire alarm test included coordination with the Sprint look contractor, so that he described how his system would be actuated in event of alarm, and how that actuation would be transmitted to the fire department through the fire alarm system. The radio master box has also been put online, as well as copper telephone lines to serve as a backup for the master box signal to the fire department for a fire alarm. Additionally, we have tested the ancil system in the kitchen area, that's the fire prevention system in the kitchen area, and they have also performed some testing on duct smokes and also on smoke hatches in the building. So, we're in very good shape with regard to system startups and life safety systems. And the elevator inspector was on-site Tuesday, J., Tuesday, and signed off on both elevators, which is really good news, because that means that the elevators will be available to our movers and to our furniture installers, with furniture installation starting next Monday, May 15. Schedule for building substantial completion and certificate of occupancy, Brae, as you can see from today's walkthrough, is working along with finishing up spaces, cleaning those spaces. They've been starting up systems, setting up life safety systems. They have asked that AI-3 and the mechanical engineers start their punchless inspections, which those have started. AI-3 was in the building today. That's an important component, so that we can certify that the building is substantially complete, 99% complete, and that all life safety requirements are installed. And we will have a punch list, which also helps us to document any kind of future damage that may be caused by either furniture or equipment moves. So, it's a document that allows us to set the record of where we are today, and also help Brae to finalize closeout for the building construction itself. So, it is our intention to aim toward issuing a certificate of occupancy and substantial completion for the building during the next two to three weeks. Obviously, we need to work with the building commissioner with regard to that, because he is the ultimate authority with issuing that certificate of occupancy for the building. It would be a temporary occupancy in nature, because the bus loop will not be finished, and we will have some additional paving that needs to be done to fully comply with accessibility requirements. But Marshall has worked with us and discussed with us the fact that a temporary permit would be an option for us, as long as he is assured that the public has safe entry to the building and that all life safety systems are active while the system is occupied. So, we'll continue to work with Marshall and with the engineers, architect, and with Brae to finish up the building, obtain the certificate of occupancy, and then hopefully conduct the move in June, early July, and open for business for summer school on July 10.
Wow.
Budget update. We have included in your agenda an updated change order log. It includes on the second-to-last and last page, items that are bolded in font, and those items are included in change order number 13, which is presented to the committee this evening for their approval. It includes, the first item is added cable management and the video stream feature for the gym auditorium lobby videos wall, and we talked about that at the last meeting, and actually showed the location for that video wall during the tour today. Also, the next item is some signage adjustments, so that we're including all the life safety code requires signage in the building, including a couple of missing gym banners, which we are duplicating the banners in the existing high school gym to be hung in the new gym, and a couple of the banners were missed in the original bid document. And then, also adding in two American flags for the gymnasio. The next item is an adjustment that's being, or to be performed, for the retaining wall pads at the synthetic turf field. It is to change the profile on the pads, so that they're closer to the wall. It will make them, we think, more durable for a long-term use, and also help with avoiding the public sticking debris behind the wall, which we found they've been doing for the last year or so, old water bottles, packaging, etc., they're sticking it behind the wall, and this would help prevent that from happening. Next item is to add a shunt trip breaker to the makeup air unit on the roof to handle the voltage needs for that unit. Adding electric locks and a fob access to the pre-K entry door. This is the exterior door, which did not, had a manual lock on it, and after meeting with APS staff and administrators during security programming with the contractors, it was decided that this door really should have an electric lock with a controlled opening and closing. Adding some GFI outlets to power faucets. We have all motion sensor faucets, so we have to provide power supplies for all of those. And the last item was an item that came up during the plumbing inspection, and that is that we need to add a CO detector in the kitchen exhaust, so it shuts down the gas to the kitchen appliances if there is CO in the space. So, the total of those items are $84,655.11. Happy to answer any questions for anyone on those items.
That's going to be funded from our construction contingency?
Yes, will all be funded from the construction contingency. But as reported on the log, at this point, based on what we have for pricing, we still have a balance of $1.7 million and change or contingency for the project. Now, we do have a couple of open items, but none of the items that are pending pricing are really going to be a substantial hit on that balance.
Mary, is that balance inclusive of the owner's contingency as well?
No, the owner's contingency is a separate line item, and that contingency, at this point, is $1.66 million.
Where's that on your chart?
It's the last value, owner contingency. The budgeted amount is $1,698.719, and we've committed $31,000 against it.
So, you just do that math from your head? Motion to approve change order 13 to be paid from the construction contingency.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Approved change order number 13.
Great. And then, to continue with the log, the remaining change proposals, which are listed here, are mainly items that have come up based on the building inspections by plumbing and electrical codes. This is somewhat coordination issues to make sure that we're complying with all of the codes with regard to the equipment in the spaces. Again, I don't think any of these is a major item of concern, and it will also allow us to meet all code requirements. Additionally, we have a couple items here that, a week and a half ago, we had startup and training on the reclaim water system. That's the system that takes the rainwater from the roof, puts it in a tank, and then we reuse that water for flushing of the water closets in the building. During that training, it was pointed out by APS, Jason Lynn, and by John Stone with DPW, some additional features that they would like, so that they can better monitor how the system is operating, and also ensure that they have complete control over the system through the BMS system. That's the building management system. It's what's controlling all our HVAC equipment, etc. So, two of those items is actually a result of input from APS and DPW with regard to additional features on the system.
Wasn't there a discussion on point, was there, about a scissor lift or some sort of thingamajiggy?
Yes. Jason has been working on, speaking with-
You've got those technical words.
He's a boom lifter, says a lift. He's been talking to several vendors on-site, having them actually tour the spaces to get an idea of reach and access, and I know he's working on trying to get a proposal together. That additional expenditure would come from that owner contingency, the 1.66.
Thanks.
Sure. So, that basically gives you an update on where we stand with regard to change orders and change order proposals. The next item is something that Mike Lyons brought up with regard to sealers for the exterior retaining walls and sidewalks in the building, and Darren's been more involved with Michael with regard to his original requests reviewed by the civil engineer and then Mike's supplemental information, so at this point, I'll let him just talk about what Mike has brought forward.
Great. I don't know if everybody's seen the email that Mary circulated. Had a chance to review it, but Mike was questioning whether or not we want to provide a sealer for the concrete sidewalks around the building to protect them a little bit better, and also on that retaining wall. When Mike brought it to our attention, we contacted our civil engineer to get some pricing and some products that they would recommend, and there's a one-page back-to-back email with some information that Par provided, based on the square footage and the two different products. What we're talking about is a sealer, you can get different types of sealers, one with a 40% silane content, which is the chemical that sort of preserves your sidewalks, which has a little bit less of a duration as far as wearability. And then, there's another product, which is a little bit better, which is, I guess, a lot better, which is 100% silane, and that will give you a little bit longer duration as far as wear and tear on the sidewalks. The price difference between the two, we were getting about a dollar difference between square foot, per square foot cost, and we have about, what do we have, about 33,000 square feet in sidewalks. Mike went ahead and did some more research, and I think he included some estimates here for the different products, and he broke it down by man-hours. I'm just seeing this information tonight, but he broke it down by man-hours and came up with some a little bit different pricing, but you can see there's quite a bit of difference between the 40% silane versus the 100% silane costs, and whether or not you want to include protecting that concrete block retaining wall as you enter the site. It's not included in the contract. It's not something we typically include, because it is something that needs to be reapplied every so often. If you use the 100%, you're going to get more of a five to seven, we feel, more of a five to seven-year expected life range because of the high traffic on a school sidewalk, and you probably get around five, maybe three to five on the 40% silane product. Mike has indicated here that you're going to get five to seven, then seven to 10 on the other ones. The one on the wall obviously is going to last a lot longer, because you don't have foot traffic on the wall, so you're going to get quite a bit of a longer life expectancy on the wall if you use the product on the wall. To protect it against, you know, salt going up on the wall or on the sidewalks, is there any, I don't know if there's any questions I can answer about these two different products, or?
So, I would ask, what, if we didn't do it, you know, what's the potential longer-term implication? So, if this adds a five to seven-year life, if we don't do it, then what happens in five to seven years?
You're probably, I mean, you're probably just going to need to be a little bit more careful with your products, and I'm not sure what Jason uses right now on sidewalks, but I'm assuming you don't use any kind of salt-type product on the sidewalks.
It's all listed, the use for environmental, and also to keep in mind with the concrete, not to eat away at the concrete.
Right. So, you're talking, you just have to be more careful with your products that you use out there, and if you go around to any school that's, you know, five to 10 years and look at their sidewalks, you can kind of see any shopping center or things like that, you can sort of see the wear and tear on a typical sidewalk that doesn't have a sealer on it.
And then, exclusive of, obviously, Jason's kind of maintenance team, I assume, if the town is plowing, they're probably using a little bit harsher.
Right.
Or stockpiling that snow, and adjacent to, either on a sidewalk or adjacent to any walls, that could have-
In effect, on the sidewalks, yep.
Or every time someone gets out of a car, and all those people trafficking it from the parking lot over the sidewalk.
Right.
The 32,800 square feet of concrete sidewalks, obviously, that's around the perimeter of the building, and then there's some adjacent to the turf field, does that include also along Glenoway Way or not?
That was a total of all your concrete sidewalks, the 33, roughly 33,000, 32,800.
I just don't recall. Is Glenoway Way, is that concrete sidewalk, or is that pavement? I suppose it doesn't matter. I'm more curious on anything.
My guess is it's going to be, it would be pavement, just because any sidewalk that we installed away from the building, we went Batuminas as a value engineering item during design.
Okay. So, it's really the perimeter of the building and maybe the perimeter of the turf fields? I mean, definitely covered that.
Right.
And it's just a portion of the turf, you know, surround, because the east parking lot is Batuminas.
Right.
But the northwest side is concrete.
I know, I spoke to Mike, he's on vacation, but I know his big concern was that small area of the retaining wall for just what you said, stockpiling, so I would support his efforts for that, and he also recommended the 40% also.
Right.
For both the sidewalks and the retaining wall.
What happens if you don't reapply it in five to seven years? Does the, if it's worn, does it change the color of the concrete?
No. If you read, I just briefly read through the material specs. It goes on like a milky white, but then it dries clear, so you wouldn't visually notice a wear pattern in the sidewalks, because it's clear. You just have to sort of keep in mind that you'd have to reapply it.
Chances aren't. If we don't reapply it, there's no negative implications. It's not like it's going to break down-
No.
-quicker all of a sudden because we-
Right. Exactly. Yeah, if you don't reapply it, it's just, if you don't reapply it.
We're back to not having it.
Right.
But in all honesty, a lot of the sidewalk is not going to be heavy traffic area, other than the doorway entrances going in and out there, so, you know, hopefully those non-traffic areas will hold up very well, maybe beyond it by all of a sudden, but.
Darren, have you seen these used at other school projects?
We typically haven't done them on other schools. That's why we don't include it in our contract documents as a requirement, unless it's specifically requested, but I don't, I know we've done it on some exposed aggregate sidewalks. It's a little bit different of a material, so you want to seal those and protect those a little bit differently than a typical concrete sidewalk, but we don't have the exposed aggregates of them.
Life expectancy of the top layer, does that take in, looking at the wear and tear just by shoveling, plowing, etc. on the sidewalk? Is that included into the life expectancy of the?
Yeah, that's where we came up. We said right around, where was it? Yeah, it does include that, so, yeah, we said, you know, three to five years for the 100%. Mike is saying you're probably looking at, you know, more of a 70-year, seven to 10-year life expectancy, so he's almost doubled what we have typically seen for these products.
How new is this product?
It's not, I don't think, I don't think it's been around for a while.
No.
Yeah. I've heard of the Prosecco products.
Yeah, the Prosecco, our office used to use a lot for exterior masonry years ago.
Yeah, and same with the-
Used a lot of exterior masonry ceiling, like the Prosecco, and it does work quite well. It really did reply, it required, reapply about five or six years, so you don't have to pick the product up. So, it is a pretty well-known brand. I just don't have the same as Darren, other than with the ever get concrete, I don't have experience using it for sidewalks. And these modular block retaining walls, not so much either, it's just, at this point, it's a pretty durable product, and I think Mike's concern is more the snowballing, stockpiling issue.
Yeah. Just a really, sorry, a dumb question. Doesn't increase a slip factor, slide, a skid factor?
No, I dropped right into the concrete.
Get it.
And to the places that you have used it before and you have reapplied it, you said after five or seven years, is it, you reapplied it because you kind of made a mental calendar note and you reapplied it, or did you notice a degradation at all?
Well, to the exterior masonry, you can start to notice just an appearance difference in the masonry. It's not the disintegrating or it's breaking down, but there is typically on the masonry product, a little bit of a glaze that is caused by it, and then over time, you just see it. And you also see that the water is now starting to absorb into the brick, and that gives it a different appearance, so you probably will see that kind of more of an absorption appearance when it starts to break down.
Yeah, same with the sidewalks. You'll see the water start to seep in, as opposed to, you know, ball up and beat off the sidewalks, but visually, you won't see a color sort of change or anything.
So, the, I mean, it does have a protection factor.
It does. But again, you have to put on your calendar, hey.
Right. I mean, as Peter said, it's likely that we won't reapply this in five or seven years.
Yeah.
But is it worth protecting it solid, you know, for the next five or seven years, which just further extends the concrete beyond that?
Just because it's an operational budget item, we've got the capital money to do it now, five to seven years, I think it would be very optimistic to think that we would have the available funding.
Yeah, you could always evaluate it.
Take prayer to do that.
Right.
The federal courthouse in Boston, the local courthouse, that sidewalk was put in 15 years ago, wasn't sealed, and it takes the beating of being on the harbor. And is it two different types of cement we're using, or, because I can't see the need for this at all.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. I mean, we've seen some clients do, I don't know what they did at the courthouse, it might be a different type of concrete, because they are exposed to the, you know, the sea and salt air right there. I don't know if they used a sealer there or not.
No, they didn't.
Yeah.
Is this something we have to decide tonight?
I was just going to say, can we table this for Mike?
Because we've got a lot of this information just handed to us tonight, so it might be worth taking a look at.
Yeah, I don't think it's something we need to decide on tonight, I mean, it can be done over the summertime, too.
Yeah, I think optimally, like, August or September will be the best time when we're, because some of the concrete, we, I don't think you can apply it until it matures. I don't think you can apply it for any concrete, so we're definitely putting sidewalks in the front possible-
Yeah, we still haven't finished all the concrete sidewalks, so.
But I do also think it's important to do it before you have the first snowfall next year, so that we're addressing it.
And it would be good for Mike to be here to sort of-
Yeah.
Yeah, I value your opinion. You've done a lot of work on this. Make a motion to table this for the next meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Thanks for your work, Darren.
Thanks.
All right. Tech budget purchase update. Mary.
So, during the last building committee meeting, the committee gave us some unilateral approvals for purchases for tech, and I just wanted to give you an update, because we have made some additional awards. Included during the past month is POs issued for, I think the IP phone system was established at the last meeting, but the IP phone system for the entire district has been awarded, and Rich Baikowski, the IT director, actually had a kickoff meeting with the vendor last week. They are completely on board, they're starting their product submittals, and they have committed to having the phone lines at the new school available mid-June, and district-wide at the latest by July 10th. And they're working on, not only the new equipment for the high school, but they also, within the bid price, are going to upgrade some of the router equipment at the Frolio and at the Woodsdale in Beaver Brook. So, we're actually benefiting that this vendor is not just trying to reuse existing equipment, but at the most competitive price, giving us a more robust system that makes all of the components compatible, so that's kind of a bonus. We've also done an additional award for IDF servers, so within the building, we have an MDF, which is the main data room, and then in each wing of the building, we have one to two IDS, which are intermediate data rooms, which have the local area network connection and switches in it, and that's where we install additional switches. Those switches are not only for the computer network, but they also are our backup or our pathway for our security system, so we need those for, to fully operate the security systems. Excuse me. And then additionally, Rich has also procured additional desktop and laptops, and we did procure a fob reader for the photocopy equipment, so that it will allow anyone who owns a fob to be able to queue up a print, swipe their fob, and it will print out at the location that they swiped the fob on that printer. So, you don't have to hunt around the building on each network printer, you can go to the printer, and when your fob is read, that's when it will print out, and so you don't have to worry so much about waiting in line for a print to take place, and you can work around that. We also have done some Wi-Fi licenses for the building, so with all those, we're still within or below the commitment that the building committee authorized at the last building committee meeting. So, that brings us up to date on technology purchases.
Move schedule review.
Move schedule. So, just this past week, the mover delivered the final 500 totes, which we're hoping will be sufficient. We have supplied 1,500 boxes, totes. Felicia's shaking her head now, so that means there'll be a change order. We've distributed 1,500 boxes for the teachers to pack up their materials to be able to move, and I have also notified the mover that their move will begin on June 23rd. We are hoping to do some early moves, such as the library on or about June 1st, if our library stacks are installed, per the schedule for the furniture install. I talked, emailed with Peter Serino regarding the trophies that I would like the school department with some additional staff that we're going to have through the project, move those, just so we don't have anything happen or any of those trophies misplaced. So, we're going to have certain things like that, that require a certain amount of TLC that will have more school department staff take care of, so we put them in good storage, and then the mover will mobilize on the 23rd. On the 23rd, initially, we were going to move the high school and then the Frolio. That may be switched, just based on whatever Terry Sullivan's needs are with regard to closeout within the school. We can easily mobilize from one school to the next. It will probably take them at least a day to move the Frolio, so that would allow us to start the high school that following Monday. We would go from the high school in Frolio to relocate, moving two grades from the Woodsdale over to the new school, and then relocating two grades in the Woodsdale All-Entry School. Then, we'll move on to Beaver Brook, move those grades over to Woodsdale 2, and then relocate two grades there, to allow for then the move K over to Beaver Brook, and at that same time, move pre-K over to Glenoway Way. So, it's going to be a lot of moving parts, but fairly confident that our mover has a good handle on it, and that the efforts of the staff will help this process be seamless. The staff has made a pretty strong commitment in helping us out. We've had a couple of follow-up meetings with them with regard to what needs to be packed, how it needs to be packed, how they'll cull through their old materials. So far, everyone's been quite enthusiastic and helpful with regard to the process, and we certainly do appreciate that.
Great.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Is there any general business or items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance? All right, hearing none. I would be remiss if I didn't commend our professional team again publicly. We had the good fortune of touring the building today prior to our building committee meeting, and it's nothing short of amazing. So, for the viewers at home, I think you'll be thoroughly impressed with the hard work of the committee, but moreover, the hard work of the professional staff that we've hired. So, Mary, Darren, you know, thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Future meetings. Should we be looking-
Yeah, if we could look at June and July.
Okay.
And actually, August couldn't be that either, just since vacations and hopefully more fun and those things. So, if we could meet possibly the 6th or the 13th of June?
Yeah, I would ask selfishly if Wednesdays are a possibility at all. I mean, I hate to deviate from our-
Well, I do know George Whiting has a standing commitment on Tuesday, so he would also appreciate going to a Wednesday if possible.
I have a standing commitment with a nine-year-old who's playing softball.
So, do we want to do the 7th of June?
Yes.
Great. Works for me.
Boosters usually meet on the first Wednesday. They usually meet at 7:30 though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think they'll be out of there by, yeah, before 6:00 PM. All right. And then if we look at July?
I would like to avoid the 4th of July week.
Absolutely.
So, the 12th?
The 12th, 6:00 PM as well. And then if we were to look at August, the 9th?
I'll be waiting.
I don't know where I'll be August 9th, though. I'm impressed. I don't know where I'm going to be tomorrow, let alone August 9th.
August 9th, I will be, I'll be on a cake.
Okay. Any other conflicts? All right. Let's go with the 9th then. Well, I'll be jealous that you're on the beach and we're not.
Hopefully, it won't be raining. If it's raining, you won't be jealous. For our work on the site, I hope it isn't raining also.
All right, so just to reiterate the dates, next meeting will be scheduled for Wednesday, June 7th at 6:00 PM, tentatively scheduled here at the Abington Police Department. July meeting will be Wednesday, July 12th at 6:00 PM, again, tentatively scheduled for here. And the August meeting will take place on Wednesday, August 9th at 6:00 PM, also tentatively scheduled for here. We will, Peter will confirm the location, and we'll get an email out just confirming that the location is available.
What was the July date? I'm sorry, 12?
July 12th.
Thank you.
Is there any additional business to come before the committee this evening? All right, hearing none.
August 9th.
Will we have a motion?
August 9th.
Second? All's in favor?
Yes.
Close, hearing none? Beautiful. Meeting adjourned?
Yep.
Thank you guys all very much.
If you guys don't need me, run into a softball. I do coach. The game's started, so, look, my daughter's-
Really, the Rockland?
They're Rockland, yeah. She's wearing 401. The only run she left.